The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA seven or Spectrum.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our school board meeting for Monday, September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, we will start the meeting tonight with roll call. Beth, if you could help us, please.
Smith.
Here.
Welch.
Here.
Becker.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Brandon Hoover.
Here.
Leighton Warren.
Here.
Warren.
Here.
All right, all seven board members are present. Um, we're gonna kick the meeting off tonight by entering into closed session. Can I have a motion to go to closed session, please? Laura.
I move that the board convene in closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five one C. Considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility um to it superintendent's performance evaluation.
Second.
Beth.
Brandon Hoover.
Hi.
McCoy.
Hi.
Becker.
Hi.
Smith.
I.
Welch.
Hi.
Leighton Warren.
I.
Warren.
I.
All right, and we will enter into closed session, coming back uh to open session at six o'clock. Thank you. Welcome back, everyone, uh into open session of our regular board meeting for Monday, September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. The board did meet at five o'clock into closed session. At that time, we were able to take roll call. All seven board members were present. We'd like to point out now that we're joined by Superintendent Stephen Merly along with members of his cabinet. Um, we are also joined um by two members of the inner city Student Council. Uh Emily Cup and Ian Hop who are joining us virtually. Thank you very much, and we'll get to them. Um, actually, right now, the first uh item on our agenda is the open forum and inner city Student Council report. So I will hand it over to Emily and Ian.
All right, for the ICSE report this today, um just some good news from the schools. Uh Marshing Band Camp was held at Southwest over the summer, and so were other schools, but the color guard is under the direction of a new color guard coach this year. Um, over the summer, Preble took sixth out of twenty-four teams in the two thousand and twenty-one Friendship Tournament in Volleyball. Link who worked across the district to welcome freshmen back this school year. I know what Preble, what that looked like for us, was playing a lot of activities for them, and we've already checked back in with students to see if they have any concerns as they're learning to navigate the high school environment. Um, East Musical Auditions were held, and so were other schools, but they're also under the direction of a new choreographer this year. West has a try-it-out dance clinic tomorrow after school. Um, J Dolls uh welcome-back activities had capture the flag and other fun games to get incoming students to kind of know each other better. And across the district, again, sports, musicals, and clubs are back in session, and I know that a lot of students are expressing gratitude about being able to regain some of that normalcy as we're trying to navigate through the pandemic now.
I'd like to add that new sports and clubs and extracurriculars like cross-country and volleyball and football, I've seen a lot more new members than they did last year, which is a really good sign for rebounding from COVID.
Emily, Ian, thank you very much for that report. Uh, just want to remind you that you uh, we want you to participate in any of the conversations tonight. So if you have anything to add during any of our discussions, uh, try to get our attention, other board members, try to help me out. If you guys raise your hand, um, we'll make sure to take all on you. So thank you very much for the report and thank you for being here tonight. Um, next thing on the agenda is public participation. We have one person who is registered to speak tonight, and Josh will help uh get her on the phone. Good evening, Lydia. Can you hear me?
I can, yes. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, perfect. Thank you so much for calling tonight. If you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, and then you have five minutes to make your comments.
Okay, am I the first one?
Yes.
Okay, got you. So do you want me to start now?
Yes, that would be great.
Okay, I guess I was watching it online, and so there's a little bit of a delay, but I won't waste any more time. So hi, everyone. My name is Lydia Lowry, and I live at nine zero one South Roosevelt Street um in Green Bay, Wisconsin. So I guess I wanted to check in or kind of circle back, welcome to the new school year, and um hopefully it'll be a great one. I was watching last night your um emergency meeting on masks, and um I guess it kind of just took me off guard that you had an emergency meeting and didn't um have anybody in the community there, so I just kind of wanted to speak up and say, you know, I really like hearing um from the community. Um, one other takeaway from the meeting was that um there was a comment made. It was by one of the newer members, and she said something to the fact that you know, everyone that doesn't believe in masks are anti-government or something to that effect, and it was really kind of a broad or anti-CDC, and I just want to say that I have friends in both groups masking and and not masking, and the country is actually divided fifty-fifty, and I know you're looking at data, right, in Brown County, but the data is really different depending on your particular landscape, right? The people that are older, you know, like several people on the board, their friends are dying of COVID, right? So it is a big deal in their age group, and it's awful, right? And then you also have a landscape of ten-year-olds that are saying, well, we've had COVID and we're fine, so I don't understand what the big deal is about. So there's two completely separate camps depending on what your landscape is, right? And then if you take out the numbers of people in general population and you just look at the people that you serve, which is, I think, three thousand students, you know, from roughly four to eighteen years old. It's, you know, that makes a big difference when you're looking at the data, right? And then you have the teachers as well, so let's take the data and say from four to sixty-five-year-olds, right? The data looks completely different, and I'm just thinking that since the country is so divided fifty-fifty, that going with mask optional just seems to be like the only logical choice. So I hope that makes sense.
Lydia, um, is that the end of, you still have a few minutes, um? Is that the end of your comment?
I do, you know, I just, you know, and I, and I feel it, everyone, there's room to be tolerant of other people's view, and I think I could pull out my backpack of statistics and data and doctors that say masks are filthy and dirty and they spread germs and they litter the environment, right? Or I could pull up another backpack that says, we're all gonna die if we don't wear masks, right? So I don't feel like at this point, eighteen months in, in, you know, September, two thousand and twenty-one, we're gonna convince anyone otherwise. I think we kind of have to like take a breath and take that sentence in. There's enough compelling scientific data on both sides of the spectrum, and I feel like if you're one way, you really need to take that in, and if you're the other way, you really need to take it in. There's compelling data for both. Scientific studies, the World Health Organization, CDC, you know, um, there's just and I could peddle that out next time for five minutes, but people are really firmly dug in, right? You know, fifty percent either way, and so all of the other districts and Brown County, you know, are mask optional, so it just seems like that is the way to move forward, and also when we're looking at the data, let's look at our shareholders, if you will, you know, our students. So I just hope that the board kind of tries to look at people that have a different viewpoint than theirs, you know, and try to come to the middle ground because people are really divided on the subject. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. Um. Thank you very much, Lydia, for for calling in. We appreciate you sharing your thoughts with us.
Okay, I thought I'd go a little bit later, so I'd have more time to like organize it better, so I'm sorry that it sounded a little bit half-assed.
No worries, I just wanted to make-
My point across.
Sure, yep, didn't want to cut you off. Thank you so much for calling.
Thank you.
Yep, have a good night. All right, um, I was notified that there was a glitch in the system with my agenda, and so uh skipped over uh two important items. Um, so I'm gonna uh go back to item B for the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we'll do the mission statement. So if you could please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Apologize about that, and uh I will read the mission statement tonight. Uh, it is the mission of the Green Bay Area Public School District. We educate all students to be college, career, and community-ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world. Uh, we'll go then to item number four, Consent Agenda Approval. First, is there anything on the consent agenda anyone would like removed for discussion? Seeing none, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Sirs.
Second.
All in favor? Hi. Opposed? All right, consent agenda moves through. Uh, that takes us up to uh committee meeting reports, and so uh we're now fully into our new committee meeting structure. We have board members who sit as the chair of each of the individual committees, and on our agendas, we'll give them an opportunity to share any uh key takeaways. Um, so the first update is on the Policy and Governance Committee from Laura Leighton Warren.
Thank you. So we had our first meeting for this uh committee, and it went, um, it was it was quicker than I thought, but we had, we had a lot done, and um some of the things that I, that we went over, I want to share with you all. Um, we, we looked at one of the things that was a, a topic of discussion, um, student dress. I know in the past, we looked at, I think it was in earlier this spring, we looked at putting that off for another year to have more time to reevaluate that, and so um the attorney, um Melissa Fieldcaller, reviewed the Board of Education policy for forty-three point one, and then we also um I was able to review a lot of the comments and feedback that were shared, um, that had been done previously regarding the policy. So one of the things we discussed is actually updating, um, getting more teacher survey input, student and parent input, and looking at the overall um policy and also the potential for maybe doing some focus groups to dig a little deeper on the survey responses. And so uh the, we plan, the committee plans to bring this to the overall committee in October, November, and um so we can have, be ready for any changes early spring. And so um the next thing that we um, one of the other things that we looked at was review of the proposed revisions to the six hundred to nine hundred series, and reviewed those with um the Chief Financial Officer to join, um, she joined the meeting to review any of those considerations, and those were the school properties disposal. I'll just go through, so it's, so it's on, on record for the people that weren't at the meeting. Um, management of capital assets, fiscal management and internal controls, district-issued credit card procedures, payment procedures, suspension and disbarment of vendors, procurement requirements and methods, fraud prevention reporting, cash in school buildings, fund balance, depository of funds, procedures for grants and private sources, student fees, procedures for federal program, budget information, and the annual operating budget. So those were all um reviewed, and we were able to look at those um to see any of the changes that were updated, and again, this policy, this group does not make any changes. We just review and then would bring recommendations forward. And so um with that, one of the um policies that is coming forward for action tonight is the internet filtering, and so this was reviewed by the committee, and this is going to be uh coming up for action tonight, and this was around uh parent-student representation on the, or this was about the internet filtering that the schools use to keep um appropriate materials accessible, and then we also talked about uh having parent and student representation on the committee. So I'll turn it over for, um, or is that gonna be later for the action? Okay, so we'll, we'll come back to that later on when we look at the action being brought to the board. Thank you.
Excellent. Any specific questions for Laura? All right, then we'll move on to the Operations Committee update, and the chair there is Dawn Smith.
Thank you. So um Operations Committee met, and that would be Nancy and Laura McCoy and I. And um the two big things we talked about, we got an annual fiscal, a quarterly annual fiscal review or report, um, and Beth did email that to the entire board, so if you want to go into greater detail on that, you can do that. Um. And we received a quarterly Esser update, and we also um Steve presented to us the Fall Return to Learn Plan, which then um resulted in the special board meeting back in August when we reviewed that we returned to learn plan and made the decision to make masks mandatory at the schools, and I think that was like the twenty-third of August when we held that special board meeting. And that was the Operations Committee.
Any questions for any Operations Committee members, anything? All right, thank you, Dawn. Uh, and then we have the Education Committee, and the chair there is Andrew Becker.
All right, so we had um a discussion about the school start time task force. Uh, the school start time task force did report back, and there was a good chance that this was close to having a decision one way or another right before COVID hit about a later school start time for um for secondary schools, and there were, there are a couple of different options in there. Um. I think that was pretty pretty broadly supported in the, in the committee about the late school, later school start time for secondary. Um, the tied to that is an older discussion that was, that was out there about adding time within the uh within the elementary day, and there may be some areas where they have to um, where those have to overlap, I guess, to, to me, it seems. Um, I certainly, I had some reservations about, um, I, I would need to know more about the uh elementary changes, and the elementary changes were reviewed by Staff Committee much earlier than the secondary start time. So I think there needs to be a little bit more, a little bit more discussion as to um, you know, are we going to look more at the elementary piece? Are we just going to look at the, the high school piece? And we probably, my understanding is we have a, a little bit of time before we'd have to make a decision, since realistically, it probably could only happen for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three anyways, because of uh otherwise to start it for next school year is not a lot of uh, not a lot of lead time. There were some, um, and then we had our student members mentioned a couple of things. There were some, there were some concerns about um activities. I think, though, we're in a, we're in a good, a fairly good position that with athletics um being a you know, being in charge of more schools athletics, I think we have a bigger influence probably than if a single school with one, you know, one high school that participated in everything was the only one doing this. I think it's easier to lead with a change like that if you have um if, if you have multiple, multiple schools involved, so um, I certainly, though, the, the school, the school start time task force, while they were split between which plan of later start they wanted, uh, it was unanimous for some kind of later start, and I think the we talked to the media about the, the science is overwhelming about the advantages of that, and so it's just a question of having some time to figure out how other pieces would would work so the board can consider everything together um to go forward. That covered pretty well.
Andrew, can I ask uh two questions? So is the plan to continue this as an agenda item um for the Education Committee? And um, I don't do you think that realistically, any implementation or change there would be, did you say twenty twenty-two, twenty-three? Because that's next school year, or is it two years out, twenty-three, twenty-four?
Um, there's a twenty-one. Did we say it might have a twenty-three, twenty-three?
Twenty-three, twenty-four, so not, not-
Twenty-three, twenty-four, right.
Just, just wanted to-
Because it's already twenty-one, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, started now. It's probably since the last time you, so, okay, thank you. Um, any other questions for Andrew, the Education Committee?
Uh, we did have, we did have the course, um, we did have the course book, and um there were no, seemed to be no changes on the course book that were any um any substantial um, you know, concerns for people. We have the um one, one notable um, one notable thing is uh the we always, we always referred to a um, I think a, a male choir and a female choir, and the choir classes are now referred to um as treble and bass, which is, um, as I pointed out in committee, is not like a trying to get into some political statement or something. It's just that, you know, with, with adolescents, you, you might have a a boy whose voice is still pretty treble. You may have a woman, a girl, who is more bass, and so and then we also discussed that in reality, sometimes there's factors of just what course is available, uh, what hour is available for someone, and it's just made to work, just like there might be some crossover beyond what's, you know, there, there's some flexibility beyond the course book to allow more kids to be able to be in choirs and and bounce, so that was um, that was a good, um, a good update.
As a, a former student in Mrs. Rego's Middle School Choir at Franklin Middle School, I appreciate the thought that went into that. Um. All right, uh, moving on to the presentation's legislative update, I'll hand it over to Superintendent Merly.
Thank you. A couple of things of import for us. Uh, one's more of an observation. Uh, I know one of the things that uh was a challenge for the legislature in setting uh the budget was looking forward to state tax collections. Uh, I think it's important to note that they are up three hundred and nineteen million dollars above what was expected. Uh, a reminder that uh we do have a biennial budget, and that does include a freeze in the second year. Um, and right now, uh, tax collections are running well above uh estimate. Uh, there are a couple of key pieces of legislation uh that are moving. Uh, Senate Bill three fifty-five has to deal with tobacco and vaping restrictions. Um, that had a hearing last week, uh, and so we'll get uh more feedback on that here uh in the next month. Assembly Bill four forty-six is about reading readiness. That has a hearing tomorrow morning uh at ten AM. Uh, and then there's a combined bill, assembly bill, and Senate Bill four eleven, um, which has to deal with uh race and sex stereotyping uh and instruction, and so I think many of you are probably aware of the debate uh going on across the country and here in Wisconsin on critical race theory, uh, and this is the manifestation here at uh the state level in Wisconsin. And then the last bit I have for you is just to make sure that uh there's some clarity on this. Um, we know that uh President Biden made an announcement last Thursday that um vaccinations would be required for organizations that were larger than a hundred people that were subject to OSHA, and in Wisconsin, OSHA does not govern public education, uh, and therefore that is not directly relevant to us as a school district. The only exception to that is Head Start is a federally funded program that does operate under the auspices uh of uh OSHA, uh, and they will be getting an update on Thursday about how that impacts our Head Start classrooms. When we know that, we'll share more with you.
All right, uh, moving on to the agenda then, uh, Annual Progress Report. Uh, this is a, a new thing. I know that you're excited about Steve. I'll let you handle it first.
I am, and I promised Vicky I would not steal any of your thunder, so if I start to get in that territory, she'll let me know. Uh, but one of the things that you as board members have received in past years are multiple reports. Um, they come at you at different times of the year, uh, and as such, you have to keep track of those. Uh, so one of the things that we looked at last year is a way to both uh enhance our reporting out to the community as a whole, to you as a board, uh, and then to create a useful resource, both for our internal stakeholders and also for our community partners, was to bring those reports together. Uh, and so uh an enormous amount of credit uh goes to Vicky and her team. Uh, this is a Herculean task. It's hard enough to do when you're doing it year over year, but when you have to do it for the first time, and you have to bring all those pieces together, and she won't toot her own horn on this one, so I'll do it for her, um, but this really was an enormous lift. Uh, so when I came to her last year and said, hey, I'd, I'd really like to have this in place for next September, uh, she said, okay, we'll do it. Uh, and lo and behold, here it is. Uh, and like I said, this is an enormous resource. If you think about this, if you're a grant writer, um, and you're maybe with one of our community partners out there, you're with Wallow, or you're with the Boys and Girls Club or somebody else, and you need to write a grant, um, you wouldn't see this, uh, but behind the scenes, those folks have to come to us, and they're looking for information. We're digging things out. We're trying to put things together for them. What a great one-stop shop for those folks. Uh, if you're new to the district, uh, as a, a board member or an employee or a parent, um, and you're looking for information, here it is. And then probably for me, the thing that uh is most important is when looked at individually, it's really difficult for data to tell a story. Um, it's hard to see the context for it, uh, and so one of the main reasons that we wanted to put this together was we really wanted to build context, a three-dimensional representation of who our kids are, who our staff are, um, what we are as a district, and what we provide to the community as a whole. So again, uh, I cannot express my appreciation, gratitude to Vicky and her team more uh for the immense amount of effort that it took to put this together. Vicky?
That was outstanding. Thank you.
No thunder stealing?
Any questions? No. Board members, good evening. I would like to introduce you to our new annual report that we hope to bring to you each September. The purpose is to share with you all in one location, as Steve just mentioned, the work and the results of the work from the previous school year. So this document is from the two thousand and twenty-one school year. The information you will find in this report represents what we, at District Office, and each school review annually to determine what's working, what isn't working, and then dig into the research if it isn't working to see what the research says about what we should try differently. From there, we set our district, department, and school improvement plans, which you'll find in this, in this report. It took three months to put this together, as, as Steve had mentioned. Our education team uh put a great deal of time into producing this document, many who are on this call to, um, although we didn't prepare anything specifically, but to respond to any immediate questions that the board might have. I want to thank all of the team members on the Ed Team for their effort, as well as Lily Road and Lori Blakesley uh for editing and making it more visually appealing. I guarantee that two months ago, it didn't look like this. My goal tonight is just to introduce you to the new resource. I'm gonna talk uh through the table of contents again, rather than getting into any highlights or detail, and then turn it over to the board if, in fact, you have any questions right now, but as Steve will probably conclude with, um it's gonna take some time to read through this. It is sixty-five pages. So if, over the next couple of weeks, questions arise, please reach out and, and we'll gladly respond to those. So Beth, if we could go to just the table of contents, please. We begin with an introduction from uh Mr. Merly and myself. We begin with an introduction from uh, Mr. Merly and myself. As he mentioned, the um. This, this document will tell the story of the district, so it's important to include information about our demographics, who we are. We included the board mission statement, district mission statement, and our strategic priorities. Again, when we set our goals for the district, whether it's at the school level or district level, we come back to what the board has assigned us to focus on. Uh, there's a page of our schools, those are active links, so if you go to that page. You can click on any of the schools and it will take you right to that school's homepage to learn more about that specific school. Then we get into the bulk of the report, this is divided into eight sections this year. We begin with programs, support, and services. In this section, you will see our data on special education, our bilingual program, ELS. Our alternative programs, which we're now referring to as innovative and educational programming, so when you see that term. Please know we're shifting away from alternative education as a term. Gifted and talented program, our First Nation Indian Education federally funded program with information. Uh, about that program in there, avid, summer school, our district health services, the nurses provided an update on. Uh, for example, uh, what are the, they spending their time doing, what are they addressing throughout the school day? Our district wellness committee provided an update and a report on their last report card. And then pupil services where we get into things like attendance data, school climate, AODA, trauma and adversity adversity. And our uh, MKV or McKinney vento status, how many students were identified as being homeless. The next section is on equity, diversity, and inclusion. You'll be hearing about uh, that work in a little while, Claudia Hendrickson is going to share an update. But we wanted to put that in one place as well, what we've been doing and what we're going to be doing moving forward. Josh and his team provided a technology update, although that is an operations update. Technology this past school year played a key role in our education, so we asked if he would provide information for this particular document. Chris Coller shared safety and security information. Uh, again, uh, reports that come to you pretty regularly, for example, the fire drills and the Alice safety drills. Chris has uh, put all of that into this location. The section on college career and community readiness delves into the data that uh, from our assessments, so you'll see the ACT information. Uh, reading readiness, mathematics, number corner. Um, we have information about national merit scholars in this section, how are we doing with graduation rates, et cetera. Um, Amy Fish also in this section, uh, just to note, the last part of that section is community partnerships. So Amy tracks our community partners, uh, and we ask her to give a report out on how active those relationships are. The next section is the curriculum cycle. And then professional development. Um, I've shared with as many staff as I can that if you are an employee of the Green Bay area public school district. You have an advantage that most other districts don't. We provide some excellent professional learning for our staff. And I know staff that if they have to leave our district for whatever reason, they use that as a selling point. It's a high commodity, um, we love our teachers and we want to provide them with all the tools to help them be successful. And then finally, the school improvement planning, this is where you uh, will see. Our school goals for the year. Our AGR report. And the district uh, goals and measures for the year. So it's a lot. It's a lot, and many of the team members are actually here tonight to respond to any immediate questions you might have.
You know, I can just note before you uh, might offer any questions. Uh, we recognize that uh, and and I had to wait because I wanted to make sure I didn't steal any of Vicky's thunder there. Uh, we recognize that a lot of these issues uh, will come before you over the course of the year, so I think the EDI one that she mentioned uh, is a a great example. So we're going to talk about that in a little bit more detail tonight. Um, as we work through the year, you will find other issues that are in here coming up. Um, what we hope this will do uh, is as those items appear on the agenda. It'll be an opportunity for you to be able to look at this prior to coming to that meeting. Uh, you'll be able to have the information that's connected to that issue, um, readily available to you during, before, during, and after the meeting. Uh, and then you'll also have access to that related associational material. Um, you know, Vicky talked about uh, when you're in the, the section there on uh. Our college career uh, readiness and you see the uh, the academic indicators there. So oftentimes they reduce our schools and our districts to single numbers on state report cards. It's just so hard to see our kids three dimensionally when you look at those numbers. If you look just right here, where they may only look at one indicator. You've got multiple indicators here where you're able to look at it, you can cross-reference those, you can understand how they interact with each other. Um, and we hope that that, just example in this area, that gives you a more well-rounded picture of who our kids are. Uh, so again, if you've got questions tonight, we'd certainly welcome those. We anticipate questions will come up over the course of the year, in particular as they're related to um, presentations that come along with these data points.
I'll just, I'll jump in first, uh, can't stress enough how uh. Amazed I am by this document for a variety of different reasons, um, just the the information, I mean, this feels like a user manual, this feels like an annual. You know, the, from a nonprofit world, doing an annual report. Um, the other thing that I'm struck by is is kind of going to the three D, but just how much uh, we do in the district. Um, just, just. When you know it, when you see it individually and and getting the different reports all the time, um, it is a little bit overwhelming. And we get the updates and you get those pieces in little bits to digest, but this really puts it all in one place. Now, just paging through it, uh, thirty different languages spoke in the Green Bay school district. What, thirty different, uh, that, I I'm stunned. Um, so I I appreciate this so much, um, I hope that we're proactive in sending it out there, I I think this is a tremendous value to. Our partners, I think it's a tremendous value to a lot of different people. Um, and I look forward to having more time to, to dig through it, so maybe more questions that come up, but thank you to you and. Everyone that that went through to put this together. Go ahead, Laura.
I just want to add my thanks, Vicky, um, I know that our admin team. I can't imagine what could, what would have, I mean, the first time would be the hardest, obviously, but um, I I do have a couple of questions. Um. First of all, so th- this is going to be on the website? Okay, and will it be, will it be changed throughout the year? Like if if something changes, so it's just a, like every summer you'll review it and and change what needs to be changed?
Um, because this is actually the data from the last school year, next September you'll receive the data from this school year.
Things change all the time in our district, so um, I just was wondering what your, what your plan was. Um, to keep this current, so um. I, you know, the public just sees bits of what our district does, so when they look at this, this is a powerful indicator. Of the scope of the work, you know, um, and it's huge. So um, this is what it takes to educate twenty thousand children. You know, this is the work that it takes, takes an army of people. Um, so I just want, wanted to offer that.
I I appreciate that, Laura, and um, I don't know if Steve has mentioned, this is just half of the report. You will also be getting an operations annual report.
That's not funny. Um, Vicky, would it be correct in saying I would imagine that, you know, as this data had, has come out over the course of the year, and this is sort of our one-stop shopping? The team is, has been operationalizing this, have been using it, so this isn't as much of value to them because. They've, they've had access to all of this, this is really a resource for everybody else when they want to know what's happening.
That's correct, Eric, uh, our standard process is at the end of the school year to gather all of the data from the previous school year. Uh, do a data dig and root cause analysis, and then base our goals for the following year on what we found.
Sure, so this is already, okay, thanks. All right, any other questions? All right, thank you, Vicky. All right, uh, next presentation is EDI update, I know that will uh, have, I think Claudia is going to join us, but Steve, I don't know if you want to jump in first there.
So as I indicated before, we know that we've got a state bill moving on this, and and this is something that has been uh, a focus of the district for years before my arrival. Uh, so we are on a continuous journey, uh, I think that uh, our team has been very responsible about. Uh, the work that we're doing, the professional development that we're providing for staff, uh, and the focus that we have on our kids. Uh, and I wanted to make sure that you had the opportunity to hear from the folks who are working on it, um, what's happening. Uh, so that as questions arise in the community, and I know that I personally have had multiple phone calls with uh, community constituents who've expressed concern. Um, and really just wanting to know uh, what's happening with uh, the Green Bay area public schools in in this particular uh, arena that uh, we thought it was a good time for an update on that. Uh, and then uh, through the the board docs to provide um, access to these uh, resources and uh, information. Uh, for people who might want to look at it later.
I would just like to add that, uh, although Claudia is the one presenting this information tonight, this is actually a, a large team effort, and she will talk about the task forces, the next step. So uh, thank you, Claudia.
It's being recorded, she can go back and watch. We'll just pause for a minute, uh, the people who are the person who's going to present uh. Had a technology issue, she'll be back here in just a second, we'll just sit tight until she's able to join us.
Hello, everybody, I'm back.
Hey Claudia, not the first tech issue that we've had and won't be the last, no worries.
Right, I apologize, I was all calm, cool, and collected now. So um, welcome, my name is Claudia Hendrickson, I'm the executive director of Student Services for the Green Bay area public schools. Um, and I'm going to be presenting today an update on EDI, where. I would like to recognize Katie Solzer for her hard work and dedication to this topic, she's worked tirelessly on this and um. Is really a leader in all of this, she just had a previous engagement that she could not get to today, or that so that she couldn't come tonight, so please. Remember how hard she's worked on that and give her credit where credit is due, so slide two. Slide two, Beth.
Believe it or not, there's a tech issue.
Okay, so what is, this is a little bit of a review of what we've already brought to you numerous times, so their purpose for our EDI are. Um, equity, diversity, and inclusion work, because we want to build the capacity of our staff. We want to provide students with an opportunity for safe place, we want to identify barriers. And we want to work through those barriers so that all students have the ability to achieve um, at high levels in our district. Widening our cultural lens and improve academic and socioeconomic emotional outcome, social emotional outcome outcomes for all students. Next one. Um, when we're looking at this, we're looking at our mission to educate all students to be college current, community ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world. When we look at our data, we have to ask ourselves, are we closing opportunity gaps for all of our students? We may be, but are we doing it at the rate that we want to be doing it at? Are we validating and affirming all the cultures, we have a wide variety of cultures in this district. Um, we're actually getting even more different diverse than we have in the past, we're truly the melting pot of um. United States, and we want our students to all feel like they are a contributing member to that. Are we widening our cultural and identity lenses, and are we lifting all of our students up? These are the questions that we ask ourselves and would continue to ask ourselves as long as I've been here in Green Bay. I brought this to you before too, or Kay has brought this to you before, but we've got it, we started a task force in April. Um, we had a survey in April. Through Hanover Research Company and um, we delivered it, we're pretty much on target. Um, to continue our work. Um, leadership team is going to finalize a plan in the very near future, and then advisory committee is going to be established. To monitor that implementation of that plan. So what's new, we've been hearing up from numerous stakeholders about you, you hired this Hanover place. What have they done for you, what have they done for us? Well, we answered all these questions, where did that information go? So what we first brought Hanover in to do was to review our district data, and they were different areas of data, but they were existing data. Um, standardized tests, suspension data, numerous pieces. After that, they did an equity diagnostic and attached, um, if you go to that link. That equity diagnostic is actually the survey that people are talking about. They call it a diagnostic because they're diagnosing what are some of the trends that people are seeing and feeling and hearing. So that is a very long exam, we put the entire equity diagnostic with all of the questions. In there for people to peruse when they have a moment, but wanted to be as transparent as possible. They provided an equity workshop for our task force, they talked about how we can re- look at data. That's the steps for making to be a more equitable district, more equitable um, access, those types of things. And from there, they shared findings and recommendations. So what I'm going to do is give you the big uh, fifty, fifty-foot view of what those findings and those, oh, those recommendations were. They're in three different buckets, they're academic outcomes, there are um, program access. And behavior outcomes, so the first one we're going to look at is the academic outcomes. And I'm not sure if any of you will be surprised, but many of us were not surprised at some of the results that they've found. Because we've had some of these issues for many, uh, for a number of years. So black, Hispanic, and American Indian students. Students receiving special education services and students with limited English proficiency and students that are economically disadvantaged. Are consistently underrepresented across academic indicators. But what does that mean in English? That means that when we look at our reading scores, when we look at our math scores, when we look at our um, college entry scores. Those different academic outcomes, those students are in, are underrepresented in that data. As opposed to their white peers, okay? That's not a judgment, that's nothing but a fact, so how can we help them to improve that? Asian students are similarly underrepresented in several, though not all academic indicators. And then male students are slightly underrepresented among students reaching for proficiency in the ACT aspirer. Um, and other areas that are, which are college readiness. When you move over to progress, program access, now this is access to our gifted and talented programs. Access to our advanced courses, ac- access to our college um, dual credit courses, all of those types of things. Hispanic, black, Asian, and American Indian students, students with limited English proficiency. And students receiving special education service, services, and students that are economically disadvantaged are all underrepresented. In the gifted and talented program. Hispanic, black, and American, stay on that page, please. Hispanic, black, and American Indian students and students with limited English proficiency, all of the same groups I pretty much mentioned above. Are overrepresented in special, the special education programs. One of the things that we. One of the things that we have been cited for for a very many number of years is the over identification of African American students in the area of emotional behavioral disabilities. In the last two years, three years now, excuse me, we've added Native Americans to the over representation of Native Americans in the area of emotional behavioral disabilities. We've also were over Native American students are overrepresented in our specific learning disability areas as well. Male students are also overrepresented. So if you're a male and you're African American or Native American, you are three to four times more likely to be in a special education than your counterparts. Okay, so the behavior outcomes, American Indians and black students are underrepresented among students who have never received a disciplinary infraction or have never been classified as chronically absent. That data, the way Hanover wrote it seems a little backwards. So you have to think about it in the opposite way that you would think about it. They're saying that they're underrepresented in getting suspensions or the number of suspensions or referrals that they're getting. That means they are overrepresented in getting suspensions and referrals. If that makes sense, students receiving special education services are also slightly are also represented in getting suspensions and referrals. Again, most of this is not a surprise to many of us. We've been working on this and developing plans for a number of years and we make gains. But what we've done in the past is as we've made gains, we've made gains in other areas too. So when we close, the number of students who were identified for emotional behavioral disabilities in the past, we reduced the number of white students that were identified for emotional behavioral disabilities as well, thereby not really closing the gap. So to speak, the same goes for, we've made significant improvements in math pre-COVID. And the trajectory was looking really good for students with disabilities, EL students and white students, but as the gaps, as the scores are going up, they're going up at the same rate. Um, finally, I attached the survey findings and this is the big thing that I think people are asking about is what did you do with those survey findings? This, um, if Beth could click on that, the survey findings, it was so long that I didn't want to attach it here. So I, I mean, I didn't want to make it into a PowerPoint. You wouldn't have been able to read it anyways. But there are a lot of findings. Again, about the way people feel about school, the way they feel about their teachers, the way they feel about bullying, the rigor in our district equity for discipline in our district. And I won't go into much detail about that, but that's where those survey findings are. The next one then. So ironically, the task force that we had been talking, that I had talked about earlier is meeting in two days. So they're meeting September the fifteenth. The task force has parents, students, teachers, support staff, community members, board members and district and school administrators. So we tried to get a cross representation of a number of different groups. We did this before the end of last year and I think we've tried multiple different ways. We got input from principals and others around who might be a good person to be on this committee. And we emailed them, we've texted them, we've snail mailed them and we've called them now to try to get as many people as we can. I think at last count, Katie said there were forty-three. And so we are going to be meeting on the, in two days to review the current data that we have. Same data that Hanover looked at. They'll also be reviewing what Hanover found. They're good. They're also going to discuss what additional data is needed. So for our graduation rate, our suspension rates, college and career readiness, state standardized assessments. Are there, is there additional data that we might need in order to make a better decision about what the root cause analysis is? So graduation rates, maybe we, instead of graduation rates, we're looking at post-secondary. How many of the students got a job? How many of the students went into a, the service? How many students went into a two-year program, a certification program, a four-year program? Um, those are some ideas I have. I'm not the committee, so I really don't know what they're going to think. But that might be, how many of our students went on to college and had to take prerequisite skills? I know my daughter had to take a prerequisite ELA class after graduating. So is, are there demographics that are showing differences of their gender differences? What are those differences? And she's probably going to be angry at me because I just said that to the whole world. And then after they've done a root cause analysis, and we're going to give them a couple of different sessions to do this. Because it's a lot of data, it's a lot of things they've never seen before. For many of them, the parents, the students, the community members in particular, we want them to feel comfortable with their decisions and the root cause analysis. And then they will make recommendations to our advisory committee. Next. Okay, I want to give you a success story and this is something we talk about a lot and we only do this internally, but when we've done a lot of work with Dr. Shroki Holly, and I think that has been brought to you as a board multiple times. What we asked last year was for Dr. Holly to work with our literacy coaches and our behavior teachers. So our tier one behavior specialist teachers. And he spent a year of coaching them around culturally and linguistic responsive practices as it relates to literacy. Why did we choose this group and why did we choose literacy? We have dollars that come out of special education IDA funding that is earmarked for early intervention. And trying to close some of those gaps that exist and trying to stop them from get some of the other gaps that could begin to exist. So we chose literacy because our belief, our hypothesis is that if we were being culturally and linguistically responsive in our pedagogy, that our literacy scores would increase. So we, they did that for an entire year. At this, and if you spoke to any of the people on that committee, you will see completely different changed hearts and minds. Now, they're not self, self-loathing. They are aware of what is going, what they need to do to be more responsive linguistically and culturally to their students. What are some very simple, universal design for learning activities that they can do, best practices? They can do that will encompass a more wide variety of students, little bitty things, okay? We chose two schools, Nicolay and King because we were identified for gaps for African Americans and Native Americans from over identification and special ed and also over suspension of Native Americans and African Americans in the district. So Nicolay had been really far down their journey and King had been begging us and begging us and begging us and chomping at the bit. So it was an easy fix. It was an easy mix. They, Nicolay has already been through all of their, Dr. Holly videos and turn and talks and whatnot and King Elementary actually went to his institute this summer so that they could get up to speed. They developed walkthrough tools for literacy that they're going to, and that was a crosswalk of the liter, the already, the tool that was already in existence for literacy as well as some of the, of the cultural and linguistic responsive practices from Dr. Holly, they merged the two to create something that every single person was really proud of. Everybody felt they could stand behind it as well as the two principles. This year, we're also adding cultural and linguistically responsive coaches to those two schools. Again, out of those dollars from IDAs, nothing is going to be coming off of dollars from the district. This is dollars that are earmarked and the DPI has encouraged us to spend our dollars doing. And we are wanting to add Washington Middle School to this mix too, because again, they are further along in their journey than many of the other middle schools and felt, we felt it was the very best next step for them. So this to us has been really, really exciting. We are very excited for what the implement to influence, excuse me, the walkthrough tool will look like this year. None of it is going to be evaluative. It's going to be for teachers to self-reflect after that we've done walkthroughs and shared with them. So it is not an evaluative tool. It is not a judgment tool. It will not be used for anything other than the teacher to self-reflect on their journey. Next slide. What's going on for this year? All schools are going to, we are asking that all schools get at least three of the Dr. Holly modules. And within those modules, it's, you talk, you go through the modules together and there are different parts that you stop at and you turn and talk. You have discussion questions that are, that are led by individuals that have been through this journey. So our equity department has been helping schools. Some of our elementaries now are going to have a principal who's been through this Wisconsin Urban Leadership Institute as well as the Dr. Holly modules to help us to move forward with that. All administrators have built CLR or culturally linguistic responsive goals into the school's success plans. Those goals are based on the gaps that are pertinent to their individual schools. So we're not saying everybody has to do this. Everybody has to do this. If my gaps are here, students with disabilities, what can I do? What can we as a school do differently to close those gaps? Right? If ours is suspension of Native American students, what is it we need to possibly do to help the Native Americans? And I'm not saying don't suspend, nobody is saying don't suspend Native Americans, don't suspend African Americans. If the behavior occurs, that is a suspendable offense. We're going to do the, we're looking for, what happened before that? How can we change the next outcome? What can we do differently the next time? So that we don't get to the point where we need to suspend a student. And finally, the schools are moving at their own place. So some of the schools are doing more than the three modules because they've already done that. Some are already doing book studies and book studies with the adults, voluntary book studies, not books. This is where we're forcing our opinions or our feelings or our anything on anyone else. These are voluntary book studies for people who are ready and want to move on and learn more. And then the cultural linguistic responsive or coaches, which is a two-year cycle with the pilot schools. If we have other schools that ask for that and once we determine how much the money we still have left from that IDA funds, we might be able to fund a couple more schools, but we want to make sure that it, it was successful with the first group of schools that we feel it's going to be successful with very strongly. Now, I would be remiss if we go to the next page. I would be remiss if I didn't address the elephant in the room. Is this undercover critical race theory? No, I strongly, strongly, strongly believe this is not critical race theory in any way, shape or form, overtly covertly or anything. This graphic right here is a graphic we got from Hanover. It helps you to see what critical race theory is, what critical race theory is not and how equity is different. Okay, we want to close gaps. And equity and inclusive practices and have been around since the seventies with the implementation of public law ninety-four, one forty-two, when we took students with disabilities and took them out of institutions and put them into schools and said they had the right to be taught alongside their regular education peers. And we have searched and searched and searched for that equity since the seventies. As we've gotten more and more diverse, we continue to search for different ways to be more equitable. I think all of us have seen that, that sign with the kid where everybody's getting the same thing and this is equity and this is, this is equal and this is equitable. We've even evolved from that. There's lots more research around that. We're taking, we are, we are not expecting that we're changing people's parts and minds. We're expecting that we're changing educational practices. And if by chance we change their hearts and minds, then more power to it. But we just want, what we have on the next page, what is our goal? Our goal is to educate all Green Bay area public school district students to be college career and community ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world. That's what we want with our equity, all students to get what they need when they want. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that thorough presentation, Claudia. Any questions for Claudia or Vicky or Steve about any of the information that was presented? All right. I don't see any. Thank you again, Claudia.
Did a good job, right? Thank you all.
Thank you.
If you have further questions later on, email me. I'm good with that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we will move on to our action item section. The first action item section here doesn't have a recommended motion. It was only posted there at the request of one of the board members. There is a bit of a presentation, so I'll hand it over to Steve. It's here in the action items in case someone wanted to make an item, although there's not a recommended motion. But I'll hand it over to Steve now for an update on quarantine and isolation.
Thank you. So part of our response to the pandemic is to understand that we may have individual students or classrooms or schools or the district as a whole that may need to be quarantined or isolated. We have not made these decisions independently. We've sought external assistance with that. That comes from the Centers for Disease Control at the federal level, from Department of Public Health, at state level, from Brown County Public Health. And importantly, we work with area healthcare providers. One of the things that was asked for a earlier meeting was an opportunity to have somebody with some expertise on the call. We are very fortunate that tonight we're joined by Dr. Hoyman. And she is working with two of the medical professionals on our staff, Kristen Johnson and Heidi Neverman. And I, we have a slide deck which we'll walk through. And Kristen and Heidi, I don't want to step on any toes here, so I'm happy to walk through the start of the deck. And then we're going to have Dr. Hoyman provide some information for us. And she and Heidi and Kristen are both avail, or all three are available for questions that you may have. So that you better understand where we're at and where we're going and the intent of the work that we are doing to keep our kids and the adults in our system safe. So are there any questions before I get rolling? All right, tell you what, while we have Dr. Hoyman here, maybe I will just defer to you to start with to see if there's any specific information or comments that you'd like to offer to the board before I walk through the deck.
Well, I will say thank you for allowing me to come and I will say that I am, I'm a pediatrician. I've been a pediatrician for twenty-four years in the Green Bay area. And I don't think any of us ever expected to go through anything like we're going through right now. And I would love COVID to go away, but it's here and we need to deal with it. I will also say that as a pediatrician, I know that children do better if they are face-to-face in school. We learned that over the last eighteen months, not not being face-to-face in school was difficult, very difficult for multiple reasons for children, not just educationally, but socially and mentally. So we need to try, we owe it to our kids to keep them in school as much as we can. But we also owe it to our kids to keep them healthy and to recognize that they need to, that they can stay healthy even while being in school. So I tell every kid I see that my job is to keep them happy, healthy and safe. And so I would extend that to also to the schools that your job is to educate them and keep them healthy and safe as well. So I would encourage you to keep doing that. I will also tell you, I sit on the incident command for our medical branch here at Ballin. And we're very proud of the Green Bay schools for their masking recommendations. And requirement across the system, so. That is the recommendation from the American Academy of Pediatrics, American Academy of Family Practice, the CDC. That children K through twelve be masked regardless of vaccination status, given our prevalence, the prevalence of COVID in our area. Especially the Delta variant, so. Sorry Steve, I didn't know, I probably.
Wonderful, thank you very much. So I'll just run through the deck real quick and like I said, we're happy to take questions either on the way through or when you get to the end. So Beth, if I could have you cue the deck up for me? And if you could forward me through to the first slide, please. Thank you. So one of the things that we have gotten a lot of questions about is isolation and quarantine. What is the difference? The key difference to that is whether or not you are actually positive. So if you are positive, then you are isolated and the best way to think about this, when I was on with. One of our area healthcare providers, they said isolation is when you're in the bedroom and the food's left outside the door for you. Quarantine is when you're at home and you're still eating dinner with your family. So those who are in close contact wind up in quarantine, those who are positive wind up isolated. So you'll see those two terms routinely as we walk through the information today. So before I go on, if any questions about the difference between quarantining and isolating. All right, awesome, thank you, next slide please Beth. So we're going to talk about two things, again, you're going to hear this regularly symptomatic and asymptomatic. Either I am, I, I've got symptoms, I'm expressing symptoms. And if you've been through our screener, you know, there's a whole list of them that, that you go through and respond to. Or I'm asymptomatic, I feel just fine, nothing is, is bothering me. So if you are a staff member or a student down to age twelve. And you have been fully vaccinated, that is, you've had your first and or second dose, if it's applicable and you've been through the two week window after that. You are not required to quarantine. If you are asymptomatic, that is, you have no symptoms. If you are vaccinated and you're symptomatic, you're not feeling well. We're going to ask you to test, I'm going to talk about that a little bit further when we get down to the bottom. And we will assume if you don't test that you're positive, and so you've got to go through that isolation process. But if you are, if you're willing to test on that. And then we get those test results back, then we proceed according to the test results. You'll see on the last two bullets there, if you're not fully vaccinated, you may have had contact with someone in the community. Right, just that's someone that you're, you're interacting with on an irregular basis, or you may have somebody that lives at home. And the CDC and the other public health entities have indicated that there's a difference between living with someone who has it and. Sporadically running into someone with whom you've had close contacts, so you can see there's two different outcomes for that. Now, if you're like me and you look at this, you may say, okay, I'm not exactly sure how that works. So Beth, if you want to forward to the next slide. This helps us better understand, I know on this particular screen, it's a little bit small. If you get a chance, you pull up the attached document, you'll see it on there, but thank you Beth. On the left side, you've got kids who are symptomatic, or I'm sorry asymptomatic, that is, that they're not experiencing anything. And on the right hand side, students who are symptomatic, that is, that they've got some type of demonstrated symptoms. So when you look down the left hand side there, you see how that close contact relates to the student. So I won't go through each of those individually, but you'll see at the top there, you're in a classroom with kids, they're all masked, they're three feet apart or greater. And remember, those come to us from the CDC, so we talk about consistent and correct wearing of the face covering. And then we talk about being three feet apart. I'll tell you, I've had a couple of email exchanges with parents in the community just today. They've expressed concerns that we are struggling to be three feet apart and you'll remember as early as last spring, we talked to you about the fact that that's just not something we can assure. Everywhere in the district because we simply don't have enough space. So we know that that'll be a challenge for us. And then down at the other end there, you see that the COVID positive person lives in the student home. So you can go across and you can look in the, you know, I'm going to need help with my colors, is that olive? That, that greenish color there on the left, that's if you're vaccinated, same thing in the symptomatic column. Two columns on the right, if you're in one of those two columns, you're vaccinated. And you can see that essentially in, in many cases, there's no quarantine. As you walk down that asymptomatic side and then on the right hand side, as you look for it. You're quarantining while you're awaiting results. But if those results turn out to be negative, then you're able to return to school right away. That's one of the reasons that we know vaccines are so important for us to keep children in school, to keep adults in front of kids. And then you can see the outcomes there in the blue columns for both asymptomatic and symptomatic students who are positive. And I'm sorry, unvaccinated, and so you can see the results there. One of the things we're going to talk about in a minute, you'll see the PCR test, there are two tests out there, there's a rapid antigen test and there's a PCR test. The gold standard in the testing process is the PCR test. One of the struggles out there right now is that there's a substantial turnaround in time to get the, the test results back. Right now, there are simply so many tests in the system that things are working a little bit slower than we hope they will be as things move forward here this semester. Somebody stop and ask if you've got any questions about the chart. And again, we did this so that it would be a little bit easier for students and family members to be able to figure out where do I, where do I live? What's the, what's the outcome, what do I have to deal with?
Steven, am I correct in saying that our team put together this chart, but the information that populates it came from the health recommendations?
Yes, it did, so we looked to CDC, Wisconsin Department of Public Health, Brown County Public Health and our area healthcare providers. And there's a couple of different charts that are floating around out there right now, they all look fairly similar. More than anything else, we wanted it to be easy to read and easy to understand through, we've been through a couple of iterations of this and we hope we've hit upon something that. Is fairly straightforward for students and families to follow.
And then when it talks about, for example, the bottom left box, COVID positive person lives in the student's home, we're relying on self report there, is that correct?
Yes, we are.
We have no way to verify, so.
All right, Beth, you want to move me down to the.
I'm just wondering what the recommendation is for. It's, you know, this is based on close contact, but what about children that just have. Sneezing or sore throat or headache, or what is, what is the recommendation for those if they're not aware of having any contact?
So our, our team, sorry. Our team gets to deal with that on a regular basis, so Kristen or Heidi, you want to jump in for a minute and let them know how we're. Dealing with students who are symptomatic, but we're not sure where they're at in terms of their exposure or their positivity.
We are recommending that they go home and be tested, if the parents are refusing to test, then they're up for the ten days. We just can't take a risk right now with the numbers, the way they are keeping them in school with even those mild symptoms. We've had many students test positive with just a mild headache or just a mild sore throat.
So that's a great point, so that's one of the things that we struggle with right now is I personally am a seasonal allergy sufferer, right? So I get, as Beth can attest to, I've got some sneezing that goes on occasionally in my life. And my eyes tend to water and itch and all the rest of the good stuff that goes along with that. From an abundance of caution, we don't want to make any assumptions. I can tell you today, we had an employee who had a spouse who thought that they were having allergy reactions, went in. Got a rapid antigen test which showed positive right away, so they're actually at home right now awaiting the PCR test results. So that's just something that, that we're going to have to deal with as we move through the fall and especially here in northeast Wisconsin, that's going to be a challenge for people like me.
When you look at the white part for the situation, it says COVID positive person is a non household member. What would that content look like?
Sure, so we've had students that participate in non school related extracurricular activities, for instance. And they discover that someone in that organized activity has tested positive for it. So that's not someone who lives in their house, but it may be someone that they're in relative close contact with as they participate in that non school related function. And so that would be an example of somebody who'd fall into that category. All right, Beth, we advance the next one, please. So one of the big things that we are really concerned about is what happens to students when they're at home during that quarantine period. If you are absent from school for ten days or in the extremist with the one example, you could be out for longer than that, twenty days. That's a lot of instruction for a student to miss. And so our teaching and learning and building teams have worked very hard to create a framework. Which allows students to continue to participate in their instruction while they're out. And I'll just give one quick example, then Vicky certainly, if you want to jump in here and add additional information, we'd welcome that. If you're a class, and I only say this because you know I've, I've sent you a notice that we had a class out recently and have another class out right now. If an entire class is out, that first day afterwards, the students are going to take home some asynchronous learning materials that they'll do on their own that first day. The teacher's going to spend that first day getting the online classroom ready to go. And then on day two, when those students are out, they're going to move into a synchronous learning environment, which is going to allow them to participate in class and keep up. So that when they do return, student and teacher, after the end of that period of time, they'll be able to jump right back in where they left off, had they been in person. If you're an individual student and you're out on quarantine or isolation, provided that you are healthy enough to participate. We want to make sure that those students have the opportunity to tune into their class. And so we're working with teachers to make sure that they're able to activate their Zoom link. So that students are able to hear and in some cases, see the instruction that's taking place during the class day. So that they've got the opportunity to participate with their, their fellow classmates while they're out on that isolation or quarantine. Vicky, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
Yes, I would just say that the, the Zoom link is for the secondary, at the elementary, they'll be working on each individual student, what works best for them.
And that's a great point, one of the things that they're doing is they're developing a learning plan that's individualized to each student. Because some students, for instance, if you're in a CTE class, might be a little bit more difficult to zoom into that. Versus a math class or a social studies class, so they'll be working with each individual student and their family to make sure they craft a learning plan. That helps keep them on track, so that when they return, they're ready to go. Okay, next slide, please. COVID testing at school, we are very fortunate that we're able to work with DHS to ensure that we can do that testing right at school. Josh is sitting at the table with us, so we get to give a shout out to him. One of the challenges, in order for you to, your child to receive a test at school, you have to have permission for it. So Josh has got a process going where we can actually reach out and contact parents. They're able to sign virtually on their, their phone or other. Electronic device so that they can give us that permission so that we can get that testing process underway. Hopefully what that does then is allows us to move through that much quicker. One important note on the bottom there, second bullet to the, the bottom, this testing is a hundred percent free, Wisconsin DHS is paying for that. All right, Kristen, Heidi, Dr. Hoyman, what have I missed?
You did a great job with your summary.
I think you did a great job too, and I would say that we owe it to our children to do the safest thing for them, to try to keep them in school. As much as possible and keep them face to face, so I think this plan is the safest plan.
And the three of them are going to take credit for it, but they're the ones who did all the details on the slide deck.
I have a question for either Dr. Hoyman, Kristen or Heidi. One thing that we, school board members, I think have heard. From the community is that our quarantine and isolation plan is overly. Maybe more restrictive than other districts or more restrictive than, than even sometimes the CDC recommends. Can you maybe just shed some light on, on that, I mean, obviously not being an expert in that area, how do you, how does this compare? And obviously each district is making their own decisions, but can you just weigh in on that that we hear quite a bit?
I'm, I'm happy to take that one, I think that the struggle is that every school district is different. And I think the, the recommendations right now, the safest quarantine. When exposed and in a, in a household is the ten days of isolation. So that the student would quarantine for the ten days of the isolation for the sibling. As well as it's ten to fourteen days after that and, and currently at Ballin, we do fourteen days in healthcare. So somebody who has a household member who's positive, it would be quarantining if I'm unvaccinated until, for twenty four days. So I know that there was not found to be a significant number of cases between ten and fourteen days. That were transmitted between. Students and between siblings in your district, so I think that it's nice that they have cut that down to ten days. But again, I think in an unvaccinated student. In a situation that is the safest way to go. For others around them as well, because if we send them back too early, there's a chance they could be contagious to other people. And then you're going to spread and have more students out.
Thank you. Go ahead Laura.
Dr. Hoyman. Can you share what you're hearing from your colleagues and maybe colleagues that work in other. For other medical organizations? What your capacity is right now in your hospitals? You know, what's it looking like as far as the capacity to treat people with COVID right now?
Well, I will tell you that it, we look at it on a day to day basis and the hospitals are all communicating with each other. So that when we get to a point where we aren't going to be able to handle things, that we will make some changes. We are right now continuing with trying to do as much of our everyday. Operations as possible. In the past, when COVID first came on, we had to stop some of those operations because. It was unclear as to how we were going to handle it all and what we needed to do with COVID. We've gotten a lot smarter and a lot better at understanding what to do. And so I think we're, we're doing okay, but it is on a day to day basis that we're looking at things. I mean, our hospital is full, so. We are discharging patients each day to make room for patients we are bringing in. But we are managing it at this point.
Thank you.
I will tell you that a quarter of the positive cases right now in our area are children. And I again see children zero to twenty one years old and I'm seeing way more positive cases right now with this Delta variant. Than I did with the first time around.
I think it's worth repeating that actually, because this is what we've been dealing with for months. So you're saying twenty five percent of your active COVID patients in your hospitals?
No, not in the hospital, in the community. Twenty five percent of the positive cases in our community are children right now.
Okay.
So not in our hospital, we do have, we have had hospitalized children, but. Children do do better as a whole. With, with COVID.
Do you attribute those high numbers to the Delta variant?
Yeah, the Delta variant is much more contagious than the previous COVID variants that we've had or the previous COVID. It's two times as contagious. And it's spread very quickly. And the symptoms seem to be sometimes mild. And the symptoms seem to be sometimes mild and sometimes severe. And to be honest, I've had several kids who have come in with just a little sniffle, and parents are convinced it's allergies, but they've never had allergies before, or maybe they've got allergies and a 99 or 100-degree fever. So we check COVID on them, and several have been positive. So even with mild symptoms, you can't ignore those.
And you're defining children as 21 and younger?
Well, that's what I see.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to, I just wanted to be precise as possible there.
Please don't tell the children that are 18 to 21 that I call them children, because they're young adults.
I understand.
Ian, I see you turned your camera on. Do you want to jump in?
Yes. How easy is it for these children to transmit COVID, the normal or Delta variant, to adults that could get sick and die from it?
Very easy, sadly. Again, COVID doesn't care who it infects, okay? It wants everybody it can infect. And so all it takes is a cough or a sneeze in that area, or wiping your nose with your finger and not washing hands, and it can easily be transmitted. So I think, you know, we don't, I don't know who has health issues when I'm around other people. If I go to the grocery store, I don't know who's standing next to me and what health issues they have, or what health issues their family members have. So I just need to make sure I'm making good choices and protecting myself and protecting others.
Would you say it would be pretty likely that a kid might get COVID at school, then maybe go home, accidentally give it to their parent, might give it to another extended relative? That wouldn't be a very good situation, would it be?
No, that, that's probably one of our biggest worries, is that children can easily bring it home and infect others that are more susceptible and at higher risk. One of the best things that those that are at high risk could do is to vaccinate themselves. And we all know that children 12 and up can get vaccinated. All people 12 and up can get vaccinated, and that would be the best thing to help protect yourself and your family and the community.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Laura.
One thing that we hear a lot about, and I'm just hoping we can hear from some of the experts here, is concerns about masks, meaning that they're create more harm than good. I'm wondering if you could provide like a quick overview of that common argument that I'm sure that you have all heard as well regarding breathing in. Well, we heard it from a caller earlier, too. But just that kind of thing, if you could just share a little bit of information, not to go too far off, but I do think that is related. Thank you.
I'd love to address what Lydia said earlier. I appreciate that she came forward. I wear a mask all day long and have to make some pretty big decisions all day long, and I've not found that my brain can't function with a mask on. I've not found that it's created any problems for me. It might, I might get a little hot and sweaty, and there's some people that get a little bit of acne as a result of their mask, but it's not creating any big medical issues for them or brain issues. Surgeons in the OR have worn masks forever. I will also say that in April of 2020, we learned a lot about how if we were masking in the clinics and in the hospital, in the medical field, and our patients were masking, there was less transmission of the virus amongst all of us. And that was amazing. And so now we wear masks all the time with patients, and depending on what they're coming in for, it may change the type of mask we wear, but we're always masked with our patients. And I don't know any medical condition short of facial issues that they couldn't put a mask on, or maybe if a patient needs to have a trick. But then I would question in this high-risk time with Delta, if they can't mask, then maybe they don't, shouldn't be in school around other people that could infect them either. So I don't see any reason for them, for students not to mask. I think it's smart for them to mask. It'll keep them healthy and safe. It'll keep the teachers healthy and safe, so that they can keep educating them and all of the staff, so that they can continue to work for the children.
Right, any other questions on any of the information that was shared in the update tonight? Andrew?
So there, you do have to draw a line for what is, you know, it's obviously a balancing act for quarantine with safety versus length of loss of education. And I've heard from, I've heard from a lot of people who, and I'm talking about people from camps who agree on almost nothing. And one thing that is bringing people together is how extreme the household 20-day quarantine is, and to have this, you know, to have the 20-day, and to a lesser extent, the 10-day quarantine that doesn't, you know, that doesn't account for even having a negative test. So I think, you know, if we look at the, CDC does talk about quarantine after day seven, with testing being reasonably safe, although it does prefer the longer ones. I get it, but you do have to draw a line somewhere, and I guess I would like the board to consider seven days with a negative test as an option for the 10-day quarantines, and 14 with a negative test as an option for the, for the 20-day situations. This is, I mean, this is based on 70 is a, is an option with CDC. I'm looking at the CDC's website, and there's a pretty substantial drop, especially if you're testing right around day, day seven. I certainly acknowledge that, you know, 10, you know, 10 would be better if there were no consequences to this, but 10 and 20 is just, it's a lot. And I think there's a point of balance somewhere, and I'm not, and I'm saying that that point of balance might be at the CDC's alternative of seven with a test, which would imply that for the household situation, it could be 14 with a test.
Just to clarify, though, that test out is only for quarantine, not for isolation. So that 10-day isolation for a positive remains 10 regardless. And that's when the in-household contacts quarantine would start, is after that 10-day isolation is complete. That's where the 20 days comes from. So really, there would be no 14-day option, no matter how you slice it.
I'm just rechecking some things on the CDC page. So I guess, just want to make sure that we move this forward in an efficient way, before Andrew puts that into an official motion. Looking for just general feedback from the board, are you interested in making modifications based upon some alternative guidance? And Andrew certainly still has the ability to make, make a motion, whether it has the support of the board or not, we can vote on it, but just curious about other people's feedback. I don't know if Dr. Hoeman, or Kristin, or anyone else has any reaction to Andrew's statement, as the board kind of contemplates.
I think the one thing that I would say is, since school started, we have had more families with a lot of positivity than what we ever did last year. And in all honesty, to cut that back frightens me. You know, earlier, it was shared that we've had some classrooms that have been taken out, and part of that reason is, is because people either didn't keep their child home when they had tested positive, or someone else in the household was positive. So we're really running into some big roadblocks. And I honestly feel that doing the 10 days, and then the 10 plus 10, is the safest for our entire school community.
Kristin, you can, I mean, that's my, my take exactly. I mean, we've been in person for, let's see, three and four, and now today. So, you know, we're less than 10 days in. We're seeing high numbers. We have two classrooms full of kids that are at home. We're seeing rising cases. You know, if we were experiencing a great deal of success, if our numbers were going down, if we weren't having any of these issues, I certainly am all for. Obviously, the goal, and we've stated this multiple times, is as many kids as possible in person, as, you know, as much as possible. But right now, I don't know that I would, I mean, it's success that we're in person, yes, but I would, for me to be able to support making a modification to what we're currently doing, I would need to see more success with our numbers than what I'm seeing now. So that's just how I feel about it. Not opposed to your idea long-term, but, you know, two weeks in, two classrooms, and hundreds of students and staff, I've got to wait a little bit longer. That's where I am.
Yeah, I agree with you, Eric. I think we're too early in to make changes now, especially if we're hearing that we have a lot more families infected and things like that. I don't want to change things right now. I'd rather wait and see where, what the trend line shows.
Why is there no distinction? Why is there not any difference if you even test with these 10- and 20-day quarantines or isolations? Certainly, there's some, there should be some difference in risk if you just say it, right? I mean, testing should give you some amount of indication that the risk is lower with the negative test, and yet there is no, it's not different at all with the negative test. You could have six negative tests in a row, and you're still out for the 20.
So the first 10 days of that 20 is because the household contact is shedding the virus. So they're sick, they're spreading germs. The second 10 days is when I have the potential of becoming positive from being exposed to those germs. So what we have seen last year is we still saw people testing positive even up to days nine, which is why we were comfortable cutting back from a 14-day quarantine down to a 10-day quarantine. But I think at this point, none of us are comfortable backing down to that seven-day with the test out, because we know there's still possible to convert to a positive. And then they're back at school, and it starts that whole process over and possibly takes out another whole classroom or another big group of children. Because if they're in school, we start contact tracing right away with anyone that was in close contact.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, there's a, there's some kind of a, there's some kind of a balance that, that has to be made. And I think I'm open, you know, if, I mean, it's not going to pass anyways, but if it, you know, if it did pass and it was a mistake, I'm open to admitting a mistake and changing back. But 20, you know, 20 days, I think, is just something the community is not behind, given the, like, like you said, the people who, you know, the people who are talking to me concerned about this, that have probably almost no other viewpoint in common, other than how extreme the impact is of 20 days. So I'm going to make the, I'm going to move that the, that the board, the board allow exiting 10-day quarantines after day seven with a negative test, and ending 20-day quarantines after day 14 with a negative test.
Is there a second? All right, seeing that there's not a second.
You know, this is a, this is a real, you know, this has not happened in 30 years that I've even followed this, that there hasn't been even the, you know, seconds exist so that large groups, like the US House of Representatives, where the idea came from, can't have, you know, one member out of 435 making motion after motion after motion. It was never, it was never the intent to force 28% of the body to agree with something before it could, you know, before it could even be heard. I would never, although I, there's a lot of things I would second and vote no on, I would never disrespect a fellow board member by not seconding for the purpose of a vote, unless there was something that was, and I have done this before, even when I was going to vote no, barring that the ridiculous situation, I guess, if someone made a, you know, some kind of a racist motion, or something I can't even imagine someone making. So that would be very disappointing if, rather than take an actual vote on this, even though that vote might be six to one, that is done this way.
I can be, I thought we had discussed quite a bit before the motion, which is why I didn't second the motion. I have no problem making a second in terms of there being discussion further. You know, the pleasure of the board to have the discussion further, but I, that's why I didn't second, because I thought we had discussed it.
Okay. So do you want to second?
Sure, I'll second for purpose of discussion.
Okay. So the motion has been made by Becker, seconded by Leighton and Warren. Is there any other discussion? All right, Beth, do you want to take a voice vote? Okay.
Becker?
Hi.
Smith?
No.
Welch?
No.
Leighton and Warren?
No.
And in who vote?
No.
Warren?
No.
McCoy?
No.
Right, motion fails six to one. All right, moving on to the next topic, I will ask, I think each of these comes from a different committee, or at least a board member who oversees each of these action items? Oh, yes. Thank you, Laura. I just want to say thank you to Kristin and Heidi and Dr. Hoeman for joining us tonight. Really appreciate the insight. Thank you. So moving on, I'll ask each board member who chairs the different committees, that maybe these motions have came out of to make the motion. So item B is coursebook for the 2022-23 school year. Andrew, would you be willing to make that motion?
I'll move that the middle and high school coursebooks for the 2022-23 school year, as presented, be approved.
I'll second.
Any other discussion on that? Andrew gave an update a little bit earlier. All right, seeing none. Beth, we're ready to vote.
Online voting has been opened.
The motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
All right, motion carries seven zero. Moving on to the Head Start Program Guidelines and Operational Bylaws, and being that Vice President McCoy is her Head Start representative, I'll ask her to make that motion.
I moved that the changes to the Head Start Program Guidelines and Operational Procedures and Operational Procedures Handbook include selection criteria for the 2021-2022 program year and changes to the Policy Council bylaws for the 2021-22 program year as presented be approved.
I'll second.
Any additional discussion? All right, Beth?
The motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
All right, motion carries seven zero. And then finally, the Policy 365 Internet Filtering, and I'll go to Laura Leighton and Warren.
Sure, I moved that the Board of Education Policy 363.5 Internet Filtering as presented be approved.
Second.
Okay. Laura, was there any additional update here? Or I know you kind of mentioned it earlier. I don't know if.
Josh is the expert here with this.
All right, Josh.
Well, sure. So this is our, our proposed internet filtering policy. We have always filtered in accordance with, with federal requirements for protecting our students from pornography and obscenity and things like that. Over the course of the pandemic, it became clear that we needed additional guidance when it came to other categories or reasons to, to block or unblock websites, especially as, you know, parents started to see the sorts of resources their, their children were accessing and, and things like that. So we had initially thought that it might be covered under our, like, we have a policy for challenging curricular resources or books or things like that. But on further investigation, it was not so. Melissa is like a wizard at this stuff. Within a day, she magically produced this policy, which involves a, a technology committee that includes parent and student representation, along with administrative and, and teacher representation to make some of these decisions, especially broadly on categories that are blocked. It, it sets forth an appeal process as well. And, yeah, I just, I, I think it's a really good policy. I don't know, Melissa, if you have any, anything else to add. I, I, I would add, I don't believe there are a ton of Wisconsin districts that have an internet filtering policy officially on the books, so.
I think one thing, Josh, that is important and critical about this policy is that it calls for review annually to find themes and to review the decisions throughout the year to see if any changes need to be made and to make sure that we're calibrated in our decisions so that there is some sort of safeguards and mechanisms for internal control on the decisions.
That, that's a good point. Melissa, and another thing that it requires us to report to the board, the number of block and unblock requests we get throughout the, the course of the year so you know what kind of action we're getting.
Any questions for Josh or Laura? Or Melissa?
Yeah, I'd just like to bring up the fact that there are a lot of homework or school resources that are, some teachers might hand out that are currently blocked by the current filtering process. For example, in my AP US history class, there's a bunch of stuff that was blocked. So I think reviewing it yearly, looking at unblocking requests is probably a pretty good idea.
Okay, good to know. Thanks, Ian. All right, Beth, I think we're ready to vote on this one.
Online voting has been opened. The motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
All right, motion carries seven zero. Then going forward to the agenda setting, just looking at upcoming meetings, committee meetings coming up the rest of the month. And our next full board meeting is scheduled for Monday, October eleventh. Steve?
Just one quick note, the Education Committee, which was scheduled for the twenty-seventh, is going to meet on the twenty-second.
Oh, okay. Getting moved up. Thank you for that. Any other comments? Go ahead, Laura.
I just wanted to remind the fellow board members that WASB's Region Three Regional Meeting is on, is coming up on October sixth at the Rock Garden. I go to this every year. It's, I don't know, they have, they have a pretty good lineup and you learn some stuff and, and get to talk to fellow board members and representatives from WASB. And then also there's the Legislative, let's see here, Legislative Conference that's coming up November seventh, which I've been to the last few years, which is also full of really good information. This year, the agenda, well, you know, will my referendum pass or fail? The Lumi Teacher Supply Challenge, things that are very pertinent to our everyday operations. And I'm considering going to that. So you all got the, the information and I'm just kind of mentioning it again so that, and basically saying, you know, if you can, the legislative conference is a, is a Saturday, and that's a big commitment for most people. So, but the regional one is just an evening. And, you know, there's a little seminar before that you can attend. And I just encourage you to go if you can.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, then I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, motion carries seven zero, and that concludes our September board meeting. Thank you so much, everyone.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling nine two zero four four eight two zero two five or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.